This meeting of the Romulus Board of Education will be called to order at 6:02 PM. May I have roll call, please? Ms. Bowles.
Here.
Ms. Crowell.
Here.
Ms. Funderberg.
Here.
Ms. Buckley.
Here.
Ms. Beard.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Mr. Thede is present.
Thank you. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Board members, there was an email sent out about an addition under other. Please disregard. That item will not be an action item, but we will discuss it under Communications and Concerns of Board Members. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Crowell, supported by Mrs. Buck?
Funderberg.
Funderberg, sorry. I have to look up more. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Dr. Daniels, I will let you introduce Ms. Hall.
Good evening, everyone. We're pleased this evening to have a special guest with us. You know, one of the things that we've been looking at is how do we get the good word about Romulus Community Schools out there? You know, we know we have wonderful things going on in our buildings and in our school and in our community and really, you know, making sure that everyone knows it has been a challenge for us. And one of our committees has had an opportunity to meet with Mrs. Hall and she's with Velasis. And we have a partnership. They have adopted one of our elementary schools. So it's a longstanding partnership that we've been going with right now. She's going to share some of the other possible things that they might be able to provide for us for our consideration as we go forward, making sure that everyone knows exactly who we are and what we're doing.
Thank you.
And just as a side, I knew Tiffany when she was a little bigger. Now she's all grown up.
Little babies, right?
Did we get the microphone situation?
I think we did. Hopefully everybody can hear me. I was a cheerleader, too.
You have to use the microphone, though. You'll have to use that mic, though, so people in TV land can hear you. Please. Thank you.
You guys stay with me. I know you like to jump ahead of a presentation, so we're marketing. We like to hit you with a few. Like Ms. Daniels, Dr. Daniels expressed, Velasis, you know, by way of... I'm sorry. Like Dr. Daniels.
The top button.
Here.
There you go.
Like Dr. Daniels expressed, that Velasis does have a partnership now with Romulus Schools. And it kind of came about, I think, maybe two sisters. One sister that's a director here and the other maybe a counselor or a teacher for the district. And they thought of some cool creative ways to, you know, basically offer supplies to students who may be in need. And it really turned in. We saw the better side of everybody that we worked with and everyone came out in big way. It was a big deal. It was really from our CEO on down. So when we got the call about, you know, you guys potentially needing some marketing experts, we were like, hey, that's what we do. We can help out with this. This is lightweight. We can totally help you with this. So with further ado, it is under Romulus Schools. Here you got to put it. So how we came about, Sue and I kind of met, Ms. Mitchell and I met, I got to get out of the professional world. I know in education, we call each other by our last names. We met to discuss some of your goals. And I know some of your goals were to capture pre-K students, so to get them earlier in the process, as well as, you know, tell people about all the cool things that are going on at your high school, which is phenomenal. I just had the opportunity to put my son in the basketball league here, which I didn't know about, kind of happened to find out about it. It was really, really cool. The high school coach was present and kind of helping the little kids, so it was a great experience as a parent. Well, with variable data, this is the clicker. Is it not working? You can help me out a little bit. You can click some. If you see, go to this next. Okay, we can just pick them all up. We have a new product at Velasis, and it's called Variable Data Postcards. And what it is, it's an ability for us to deliver direct mail to households on a one-to-one basis. So we would say Tamika, we would say Sandra, we would say Danielle, and you guys would be neighbors. And we know interesting details about what's in your household. Spooky. But we're the good guys. So we know if you have two children and what their ages are, if you don't have children, and so on. So we do have the unique ability to, you know, look at the dynamics within a household, as well as ethnicity and so on. Well, in our world of when we're dealing with the Procter &amp; Gamble's of the worlds and, I know Vitamin World, I was just there the other day, so I can use them as an example. We use these dynamics to let them know heavy vitamin users and so on in their household. And we could do the same for you in Romulus. You guys are looking for pre-K students? We can find those people for you. If you're looking for the middle-aged student, we can definitely find those people for you. So with this, if you guys could notice on the presentation, or you can look down at yours, each household has a different dynamic. And so we're using customer, noncustomer, but in your world, we would be student, nonstudent, okay? So in your world, if someone's a student, we can message to them and say, hey, did you know that we have X going on, if it's something new and additional? If they're a nonstudent, we could say, hey, Romulus Schools is happening, you know, you need to bring your child here. We have an associate program coming soon. So we have the ability to flip messages by household. We can switch next. Kind of how we're... You can go ahead and let them all roll down. Kind of how we were able to do what we do for the price, we, if you guys get Red Plum, the Red Plum packet in your mailbox, you familiar with it? We have a network that's over 60 million households. So what we do, and we're the largest client of the U.S. Postal Service, so you've got a good friend on your side. So what we're able to do, in this instance, Macy is the client, we are, we put the card on top of our shared mail packet, so it shares the cost of the postage. So no one, I mean, no one can beat the price that we get for direct mail. So if you see Macy's and Saks flipping the switch, and they all want to save money, too, Romulus Schools can do the same. Well, a little bit about it is visible, so to the end consumer, a lot of times, you've gotten stuff from us, you don't even know where you got it from. In the mailbox, you pull it out, it's just with your mail. It's a direct mail piece. You don't know how it got there, but basically, it was delivered by the U.S. Postal Service via our network. Go to the next slide. And you guys, please feel free to ask any questions. How it works, it's a bit of saturation here. So we would start the initial targeting by saying, where is, where are the highest concentration of the pre-K students that you're trying to reach? So we're trying to reach these young families, new moms and so on, to get them in the early process of learning about Romulus students or Romulus Schools. And so if you guys look a little bit here at the map, a zip code is broken down into sub-zip codes. Now, from, you know, I live in Wayne. In the area of Wayne, I live like, if you go two blocks over, it doesn't look the same. So if you think about where you live here in Romulus, each part of Romulus is very different. You have new construction, you have some of the older neighborhoods. Every area has a different dynamic. You have some areas that are filled with seniors, so that may not be a good place where you want to advertise. So what we do is we take an approach, and in this example, we use ethnicities. So we looked at B1. So the area code, the zip codes are broken down into, you know, like I said, sub-zip codes. So if we looked at B1, it has 3,671 households. Thirty-nine percent of those households would have children, or, you know, African-American, Hispanic, owner-occupied, and so on. So whatever dynamic you are, the advertisers, looking for, we would look at what zip code makes the most sense. So in your approach, you want to target maybe Belleville students. Let's not mail to all of Belleville. Let's look at certain areas or sub-zip codes of Belleville to save money, to advertise to those particular people you're trying to reach. So we make the marketing a little bit more relevant to who you're trying to reach without going over budget. Next slide. Here's kind of how we do what we do. And again, in our world, we deal with a lot of people with databases that says loyal, occasional, lapse. So in your, in your case, you would say student, or a student that may have left, or, you know, someone that, you know, might have only been gone a year, someone that's been gone a little longer. We have the ability to then message to those people a little differently. So in this case, we say loyal, meaning this person's been loyal to the school district. They've been here. You might want to tell them about a new thing you have going with the occasional, and I don't know what bucket you might want to put there, but you guys think of who you want to segment, you can message to them differently and so on. If you look at laps, hey, we miss you. We got some new good stuff going on. I need to tell you about it. So we allow you the ability to use your data along with our data. You can click now. So this is the part where Velasis kind of chimes in. Above the dotted line is your data, if you guys have those records of who may have left. And here's our data. With this program, with some of the cards that, and I'll show you the different options, we provide five lists. So five lists could be households with children ages two to four, households with children aged twelve to fourteen, if you're looking for the middle school age student and so on. So we provide five lists. We also have lists for Hispanics, single parents, and so on. So you can entice the single mother, which is traveling on the road, after-school care is my best friend, or, you know, pre, you know, before school care is another good friend. So you can have the ability to specialize, speak to those people. We're not saying, hey, Tiffany, you're a single mother, but the message is so subtle, like it appeals to me, and you have no idea why. And I'm sure you guys have all received advertisement, like, huh, how did they know? We may not be blatantly saying that we know this about you, but we do have the ability to give you more relevant message to your lifestyle. Okay? Any questions about that? Okay. So here's the good part. How much does this cost? So with the basic card, that's 15.5 cents a household. And again, if you guys ever did direct mail, you're not able to touch that. With our basic card, and I think I have some examples somewhere around here, the basic card is a five-by-eight. You guys can pass that down. And it's a static message. I'm sorry. I apologize. It's a static message, so the, it doesn't change. We don't provide lists with that. It's just a basic card. We will provide the targeting that says, hey, this sub-zip code is relevant to you. But again, it's a basic card. Every card is the same. Everyone in that sub-zip code receives the same card, which is perfectly good, because if you, upfront, we're going to do good targeting to say, hey, these are the areas you need to be in. So that's fine, too, if you want to be more budget-conscious. The next card is called a variable message card. And the example up there is for Saks Fifth Avenue. That's their card of choice. And they target people by income. Imagine that. So if you have a higher income, they'll give you a lower offer. If you have a lower income, and they're lower income, it's not really lower income. Say you're a 70K person, you know, real low income, they'll give you a higher coupon. But still on the card, they still call out the consumer name. The name on that card is Jessica. So when it still gets to the household, her name is called out on the ad, and she knows it's for her, but she doesn't know they gave her offer based on her income. And here's an example of a message card. I did this one personally for Dixie, Dixie and Target. And you can see how we call out the consumer name and the offer on that piece. Last but not least, I prepared this for Romulus Schools. It's called the image card. It is the most expensive card, and here's where I was going with this, guys. I thought, because you have so many different goals, you can kind of achieve all of your goals in one drop. So if you're the pre-K mom, and you're the middle school mom, and you're the high school mom, and you're the mom that left the district, within this drop with the variable message card, we can message differently to all of those people. Hold on, let me show you an example.
Here we go. Let me give you a set. I'm sorry to set over here. No, 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 no. I learned the last time.
Is it a set, so they're going to be too different?
Tiffany, who, does Velasis provide the design of these cards? Or do we have to do the design and submit it, upload it to you?
I can, we can definitely do that for you. And we did some mockups here for your, and you'll get some more coming around here. Get back to my mic.
The man in charge asked, will we do the design? Yes, we will. We would, we would definitely provide that as a service to you and your partnership. I know you guys just don't have graphic folks hanging out, but we definitely could do that for you. So in that...
I think those are the same ones.
Different, different. It shows a difference.
So if you can notice in what we did in the creative mockup... You can flip the card there. You can go next. And here's on the screen for you all who can't see. If you notice, we did a variety of cards and message, messages. Some was geared towards young, and I knew that ethnicity is a big important factor here. We don't want anybody, everybody's welcome at Romulus Schools, and you wanted to speak to any household that you reach. And we also, you know, with this ad up here, talked about, you know, people getting into culinary arts or an associate degree. This one at the top was geared more towards the middle school student, so that, you know, the parent is kind of faced with the choice of, okay, where will I send my child for high school? That's a great time to talk to them again and reaffirm that Romulus Schools is the place that you need to be. Here again, two other pre-K messages. And again, we have diversity. And I can tell you, this card can get really loaded, seriously, by, your household could receive an African-American ad, your household could receive a Caucasian ad. We can get that detailed with our marketing, if you would like.
And you can use, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No.
If you do the designing, we could submit photos of our students, of our programs, and you would use those in your design?
Absolutely, we could. Absolutely, we could. And we could work with you on messaging, you know, to kind of, because I know some of the things that you had did before, you know, I showed it to the creative team, and sometimes you put too much words on the paper, and people, they just don't take it all in. This way, we can kind of do something more innovative and creative, give you guys a fresh look, and, you know, to really engage with... Everybody wants to be entertained now, like, you know, this is amazing that, you know, you can't just send people a typed letter anymore. It has to be entertaining. You need to tweet it. You can't, you know, or you can't, the days of just the snail mail is just not, not what's happening. So we could definitely do something to kind of freshen up the look and use your concept. This was just an artist taking a stab at it, but we could take direction from you as to what you would want to do and what programs you would want to highlight. So if you think about it like this, since we're in a school, this is just an algebra problem. So whatever X equals, it triggers a photo or a message. So in your case, if X triggered that you had young children, it would trigger the photo of the young children. If X meant that you had the households with teens, it would trigger that photo. Makes sense? You guys have any questions?
Is there a term contract that would need to be done, or is this done by job?
We could do it by job. So basically, for someone like you, we wouldn't do anything that would be like a long-term commitment or something like that. You could just do that job with us, and, and we would go from there, truly. So attached, and I believe that you passed out a spreadsheet, that spreadsheet is pricing. That spreadsheet works in conjunction with some maps. Some of you have maps. That's kind of tucked in there. So those maps were some zip codes that Ms. Mitchell provided for me, and the maps go in conjunction with the report. So if you look at the highlights on the maps, they would tell you if it's a pre-K home, I mean, you know, sub-zip code, high school sub-zip code. I have some wall maps for your team to get together to actually plan. I can come, I'm local, and be a part of the planning session for you, so it could be working. And we could really drill down to some of your goals and exactly where you might want to target. But in that spreadsheet, it provides pricing. And the minimum to this program is 10,000 pieces. So 10,000 pieces, I don't think for the size of the mass of where you're trying to reach of the students, I don't think that's enough. But if you guys wanted to just do a test with 10,000 pieces, you could. So with the basic card, that would be $1,550. With the variable image card, which I made the mockups for you, you're looking at $1,990.
Less than a quarter of a student.
Yep. This man knows how to look at it.
Excuse me, ma'am. Do you have any more maps on you? I don't have any in my bag.
Okay, I will, I will email them to Ms. Mitchell.
I was going to say...
Thank you.
You can have the set.
Okay. And we have some wall maps, too. I have a couple there for you all to do some planning with.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for me? I won't take up more of your time, but I seem like you guys really get the concept of what variable data marketing is, and I will tell you that makes you very hip.
So does Velasis work outside of direct mail as well? Do they do other?
Yes.
So can you expound a little bit on that?
Yep, we do. We do digital. We also do like what they call pre-print, so those are the flyers you get on, forgive my back to you guys. Those are the flyers that you get in the mail or the newspaper. We do what they call run-of-press, that is exactly on the newspaper. And with all of our products and services, we offer targeting. So that's the heart of what we do. So if you're trying to reach those students, we would utilize that through targeting. So on it, online, we even get spookier. They literally track the behaviors of, oh, man, man, yeah. We track the behavior. So if we know that someone was on your site, and then they went over to Belleville's site, if the mom's kind of researching certain things, education and so on, we're able to serve up an ad to that person. So you know how you guys get those ads on the side? My son was looking up at some Adidas shoes. I don't know why. But, you know, he was on my computer, and I kept looking like, why is Adidas blogging me? They just kept like, come on, buy them, buy them, you know? But from that, that thing, from that perspective, sometimes the consumer does not click through, because I'm not a click-through person. I usually don't click on those ads. Some people do, but what it causes you to do is have, yeah, it's in your mind. And so it caused me to say, Drew, were you looking at Adidas shoes? Like, why are they here? And, you know, and so on. He actually, it actually led to a purchase by birthday time, but, you know, but it is here, and it is the psyche of the consumer. In your case, you know, we call moms and dads, but they're consumers to you. You really want them to come and see what you all have to offer. So we do have a wide variety of offerings. My role there is with variable data postcard, but I've sold everything that we have. I'm happy to help you. I want to see you win, Ms. Dr. Daniels, of course. So you let me know what information I can provide to you. I'm happy to give it. I'm sure we have a lot of resources that would help your district. Any other questions?
Do you have any business cards?
Yes, I do. Sure.
The price that you quoted, did that also include the graphic assistance that you were giving?
Absolutely.
And was the cost also included?
Yep, everything's all-inclusive. There's some cards. I don't know if I have enough, but I will get more cards here.
I can always, I can always show.
Yeah, and I want to thank you for your wonderful presentation. I guess this question is more for Dr. Daniels, though. I would imagine, short term, there's probably some availability within the budget for you to exercise administrative discretion if you feel you need to do a marketing plan, which I think, I think we all agree. But board members, just be aware that the superintendent may come to us sooner than later and ask for budget resource allocation for this type initiative, because we have identified that this is one of our weaknesses. And Dr. Daniels has been, and her staff, including Margie McAnally as well, have, you know, we're using this, this partnership that we have with Ms. Hall, and they're, they're getting a very competitive package here, and it is something that I think we'll probably do on a more extensive basis later. But it's very important that we motivate something for our kindergarten roundup, for the early college program, the schools of choice. I mean, there's a myriad of things that this board's already identified, so I guess that's the question or statement, Dr. Daniels, is if there's not resource allocation within the budget for you to do this, bring it back to us as soon as possible, and we will consider that.
I will do that.
Thank you. Did any board members, anybody else have anything to add?
I just had a comment. I think this is so needed. I've seen lately, Wayne Westland has advertisement. They're in the paper, all the school districts, everybody's got advertisement out there, and we offer just as much or better than what they're offering. So we need to get some way, I mean, this is, seems like a pretty affordable way for us to try to get what we offer out there.
It was interesting, because our graphics team is in Connecticut, so they have no idea where Romulus Michigan is. And so what, what it led them to do by the zip codes that you provided us was to go sneak and peek at all of your competitive websites, to see what you had to offer. And the artists, this is a really cool place. And that was the same reaction I had when I brought my son to the base, like, this is really cool, you know? And so you, you all are a great kept secret, and you need to share with others what you're doing. And we can, that's our goal, strategy, and we work with the hundred, 98 of the top 100 advertisers. So I know that we can really help make you powerful and impactful against your competitive people.
Yeah, and I just want to add, I know in our childhood committee meeting, we have, you know, there's a lot of students that we're trying to target to get to come in preschool that we're trying to get to come to Romulus. So this is all will be very helpful in even kind of trying to accomplish that.
I just had a couple of questions, Mr. Murphy. In regards to your competition, as far as your pricing and just, I guess, how you market yourself?
Sure.
Are there certain things that you do above and beyond what your competition offers? And then I guess I probably need to talk to Sheri to find out, are we bidding this particular piece out? Have we given other marketing companies an opportunity to do a bid for us, or are we moving ahead with this particular company?
We haven't put a formal bid out.
Okay.
Again, I think the, there's been a lot of legwork because of the relationship. I think the first step was to bring it here. I think the first step was to bring it here to find out, you know, where we want to go with this. I could see if we were doing a project that was, you know, 25, 30, 40, $50,000, I could see where we might want to do our research and give others an opportunity. But, you know, with the pricing that she was giving to them.
Well, I know it's a perk.
Yeah, we absolutely welcome it. We absolutely welcome it. Yeah, we absolutely welcome.
And the postage is the big thing.
That's the key.
Because nobody else is going to be able to.
Let me tell you the big example here.
I'm just, you know, I just wanted to, for our viewers.
No, no, that is the right thing to absolutely right to do.
Because that would be their question, would be, well, you know, have you done any pricing? Have you done any price comparison?
Sure.
For the sake of the budget.
No, absolutely. Let me tell you here, the U.S. Postal Service, so they have a program, and you guys can look it up, it's called EDM. And they're the next closest thing to it. So this is the U.S. Postal Service. We are their largest client. But we have this network, okay, that we've had for over 40 years. Well, with theirs, they charge, they just had a postage increase, they charge 14.5 cents just for postage alone. And look it up. No, this is healthy.
That's the bulk rate.
That's, yeah, just for, I'm sure, to compare apples to apples.
Right.
14.5 cents, and that's, bulk is the cheapest postage you can get because if you go into, you guys know.
Right, first classes.
Right. You know the drill. And so, and that's no targeting. They don't, you have not printed a thing, and you have not got creative art services yet. So, you know, again, you know, we could, you could look at our website and look further into what we do. All of the major Lowe's, Home Depot, all of those guys are coming our way because the postage is killing every major business. So this business, Velaces just got into this business two years. And this went from zero, you know, initiative because we had the network, to 18 million in one year. So that's just to tell you, the wave is coming here because of the cost of postage, it's killing everyone. No, it's a great question.
Anybody else have a question?
Well, so this would target, like seniors with no children, this would know not to send one to them?
Yep. So say if you were in that sub-zip code where we have deemed a lot of, you know, pre-K or students or people with families in, everyone in that sub-zip code would receive an advertisement. But we could give you something that's called an influencer ad. You may be a grandma, or, you know, or you might need senior volunteers. We can curtail so that last bucket would be anybody else. But we try to keep that waste very minimum. We try to go only ads to spots that we would have less than 5%, 10% waste in them. You could call it waste, but.
So in other words, they're going to get a message, you would tailor what that message was.
Yep, we would control what that message.
So the seniors would say, you know, come for a spaghetti dinner next Monday, or something of that nature.
Absolutely. Like, for instance, just today at work, we had to do something for Lowe's, and they only wanted to speak to certain people. They still are doing that saturation because it's still cheaper than if they were to go the direct, direct, direct route. And so they just would send people ad that they didn't want to speak to, a have a nice day. You know, it could be that simple. Or you could really utilize that for philanthropic things, or, you know, other goals you might have, you want to get, you know, grandparents to read, yep, fundraising and so on. You just find a strategy against it, basically.
So, and you help us develop what that strategy is going to be?
Absolutely, yep, yep. I've been in the business for 12 years, believe it or not. I started when I was 10. And oddly enough, my first job was with Inster Public Schools. So I do, I used to do immunization and pupil accounting and so on. So I do understand the lingo and what you guys are trying to achieve. So I think I could be very helpful and useful. And as well as any client that we sign on, we have marketing resources that become an extension of your resources, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate that. And we'll make sure that any of the other information that we need, we'll get it from you. So that whatever anybody needs, they'll have.
With that, item number six is approval of field trips. We can, they're presented separately, so we probably should do them separately. The first one is for the health occupations. Trip to Midland. I'm sorry.
Traverse City.
That's to Traverse City. Is there a motion for this? And then we'll discuss.
So moved, Mr. President. Would you like me to read it? I'll read it. Moved that the Board of Education approved a proposed trip to Eckham, Michigan. Is that the one?
Yep.
From April 10th through the 13th, 2013, for the Ramus Senior High, host of students to participate in host of state conference as proposed.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Kraut. I'm going to say something, if I will, and I'd ask that the superintendent or the business manager respond. It's my understanding that we have no extra buses. I'm a little concerned at sending a bus to and from Traverse City and the wear and tear that that puts on the bus, taking a driver out of district. Do we have another bus that could do that particular route that that bus would be on? And heaven forbid, if we have a breakdown. Has it been investigated as to chartering a bus and whether CTE funds would be available? I know it says the students would be paying for this.
Mr. President, I, what we would have to do, we would need to take a look and see the availability because I understand exactly what your concern is. One of the things that we'd have to look into, I don't know what the chartering would exactly involve, you know, so.
Contract.
I would, I would, yeah, that would be the portion that I would be unclear about.
There's not, the only thing in the contract that mentions it is, and it's on page 35 of the contract, item 11, "The Board is encouraged, when feasible, to transport students via school buses on trips which are financed by the Board and are within a reasonable distance." So that's a matter of interpretation.
It goes into past practice as well.
Yeah. I just, do we have any backup buses if one breaks down? That's a long.
Well, that, too, that's for all of them.
I mean, we have buses. We have buses we could send, but will it disrupt the, you know, the general transportation department for a day? Yes.
How much will it disrupt?
What would the anti-be, do you?
Double routes, things of that nature. You know, we'd be doubling up in routes where the driver basically makes a run to the elementary school, drops off students in a location, and goes back and picks up another, you know, busload of students. And we do that when these types of things arise. Typically, those things are closer to home, so the transition is a little bit easier. I'm not even sure if transportation saw this, so.
Yeah, and what happens with any, with double routes, overtime clause? Are those charged to this trip?
It could be if that driver falls into an overtime category with the number of hours they're already driving, yes. But it, you know, I can't say with certainty without knowing who it is and what driver.
Because this is, the way I read the proposal, it's two round trips. The bus driver would go up, drop the students off, come back home, and then, you know, on the 13th, bless you, go back and pick them up.
Well, the return time is on Saturday. So it's really just the one day up on the 10th, it looks like to me, on Wednesday.
So they're impacting the schedule.
Yes.
And is this something the students have paid the transportation cost before, or has that been paid by CTE?
CTE. I think they usually do some fundraising, so they take it out of student activity accounts. So I'm not sure exactly, when she says students will pay their own expense, I'm not sure if that directly means out of their pocket or through fundraising. I couldn't, I'm not sure with the way this is written. When is it? April 13th, April 10th?
Good point. If the bus driver is going, well, of course, there would probably be a rest period involved because, can they drive 10 miles or 10 hours?
10 hours. Because it would be a 10-hour round trip.
Or is there break time required for their CDL license?
Because my car, it's five hours to have.
Now, I'd have to check with them, Doc, and see what the regulations on that are. There might have to be a maximum amount of time that they're off the road before they can get back on the road.
We'll have to look into.
Yeah.
I guess my, Mr. President.
Oh, wait, you know what? Did you, did you all see the little notes? They're handwritten. They're not as dark, they're on the line above source of funding, and it says, "One bus up spending the night." And then the one in the, is one up, empty, spending the night.
Oh, that must be addressed, the hours on the road. Yep.
Okay. Mr. President, I guess my concern would be if, if we're going to start taking these drastic measures, because this directly affects our students, you know, maybe we should have said something, you know, prior to, so they would know to prepare to try to charter or whatever it is they need to do. Because this directly affects each group that we've done in past practice of trying to do that. And I understand what our buses look like, so if we're not in danger of, I mean, if we could send our best, best bus, like.
And we would choose.
I mean, our best bus, whatever that might be.
We are selective on what we, you know, on what we put on the road.
Well, here's.
And I understand, I do, I get it, because I know our buses are.
Maybe for our next retreat, this should be something we look at and do, like a field trip.
It's just right here.
More, I guess, of a requirement that they have to fill out. I mean, I don't actually, I mean. Well, and as far as advance notice, I mean, again, you know, here, this is the notice they gave us of the trip. We just received this. So the board couldn't have responded any sooner.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about us responding, but if we were going to, just in general practice, say, okay, whatever field trips are coming up, you know, you guys need to look at a different way because our buses are not able to.
So like, the board gave us the direction that no out-of-state field trips unless they're chartered buses.
Right, or something like that.
So that's what we've been operating under, under that principle. This is within state, so it falls outside of that, that kind of direction.
That's a mandate.
I mean, yeah.
There's something we need to look at.
I mean, on the sheet, there, I mean, obviously, it has motor transportation, if district transportation is needed or private and, you know, policy, too. So I guess they do address that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I only raise the concern because, you know, I think we're all getting increasingly nervous about our bus fleet. And, you know, a five-hour, one-way trip, you know, is going to be hard on some of these buses. And, you know, I think, you know, taking the concerns that we've heard, I think, you know, probably putting the brakes, pardon the pun, now, is, will probably have unintended consequences that we don't want to have for our students. But I think going forward, we all have to have the mindset that, you know, we really have to protect our fleet so that it's here for our day-to-day operations.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Should we then maybe propose a certain amount of miles traveled as opposed to our first mandate that we talked about, having it be out of state?
Well, being in the middle of the school year, I think, I think we're going to be stuck by past practice. So yes, going forward.
After the fact.
Yeah. Going forward into the next budget year, yes. I would think that, you know, maybe listen to the admin, have the administration come up with what they think is reasonable, and I would almost say within 100 miles. But that's just off the top of my head. I don't know how feasible that is. But that's something for the next budget year's conversation, because I would imagine that there's probably going to be several other past-practice field trips come before us between now and June. And, you know, we're going to be hard-pressed if we go for one, how do we not allow the others? Who's making the decision on what bus?
Transportation.
Transportation. Does that include a mechanic?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, typically, they're going to take the bus that's the newest.
Right. I mean, but I mean, that bus will be once over by the mechanic before your transportation person.
Okay.
Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries six to one. The next one is the FCC, FCC LA State Competition.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed field trip for the Romulus High School FCC LA students to Midland, Michigan for the Leadership Conference, April 17th to the 19th, 2013, at no cost to the district. Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Funderberg, supported by Mrs. Buckley. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you. The next one is, this is in anticipation of our wonderful, we should be getting a score update probably within about an hour, if we're still here. This is in anticipation of our basketball team advancing, and I advise the administration to go ahead and bring that before us now so we don't end up in a last-minute situation. And I thank you to Ms. Funderberg for bringing it to my attention. With that, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed field trip for the Ramus High School varsity boys basketball team to East Lansing, Michigan on March 22nd, 23rd, to compete in the MHSAA state finals and no cost to the district. Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Ms. Funderberg. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six and one. Thank you. With that, we will move into the meat presentation. Dr. Daniels?
Anna, can you give me a second there?
I sure can.
As you know, we have just, well, we just completed the meat testing, but in the fall, we completed the meat testing.
You know, last year, one of the big concerns that we all had, we can go on to the next one then, was the fact that we got new cut scores. You know, they were much more rigorous. And, you know, much to our chagrin, what had been a nice rosy picture suddenly was not. But what the new scores were supposed to reflect was where do our students need to perform in order to, or what levels of proficiency, how do they need to score in order to be on track, to really be college and career ready? So the scores that you're going to see are going to reflect how our students are doing in keeping up and keeping on track to be college and career ready. One of the things that we find, in addition to just how many students were proficient, one of the lenses that we look through in order to see how our students are doing is what is called the growth model. And what we, what the department does, what schools do, what districts do, we not only look at the number of proficient, but how are we moving our students? There are five primary categories. You can either significantly decline, decline, and that means kids are getting worse, maintain, improve, or significantly improved. We do not want our students to be in the categories of neither declining nor significant decline. So what we want to take a look at is, are we being able to maintain and continue to have that improvement and significant improvement? And this is how we fell this year. On the left, you see reading, on the right, you see the math. This is the percentage of students at those different grade levels who we were able to make sure that they lost no ground, made improvement, and a significant improvement. And if you go on and look at the next one, and this one you did not have included in your original, but this is one where we are comparing how we were looking last year in our growth to this year. Now, if you'll, if you'll take note, the orange or the reddish color, that's the current school year. The blue was last year. So you can see how we are moving. The only area where we, where we had a, you know, we kind of backed up a little bit, was in the fifth grade. And we went from 68% who were progressing forward to only 50% this year. But in all of the other areas in reading, you'll find we had significant improvement, going from 58 to 73% for fourth grade, and sixth grade, 46 to 57%. In the seventh grade, 44 to 62%. And up from 62 to 78% in the eighth grade, and this is reading. Now, if you remember last year, we almost all passed out when we started looking at math scores. You know, where they just totally tanked. But if you take a look at what we've done this year, how everybody just knuckled in and the improvement that we've made, it's absolutely something that we can really say we're, we're moving in the right direction. At the fourth grade, we went from forty-three percent to sixty-three percent who were, um, maintaining and improving. Fifth grade, fifty-two percent to ninety-six percent of our students were going forward. Thirty-one, in the sixth grade, thirty-one percent to seventy-four percent. In the seventh grade, twenty-four percent to fifty-six percent. And in the eighth grade, twenty-five percent to seventy-four percent. And that's, you know, and you have to know, everyone, we, we just, we were keeping going with our reading, but everybody just put, you know, a full-court press on trying to stem that flow in the math area and to make some forward progress. And, and this is what, this is what our result had been, so we're extremely pleased with that. The next, um, slides are going to be trend data, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, but I just wanna basically give you what the information was and what it looks like. There are, when, when reports, when the MEEP reports come out, they're reported in, in three separate categories. All students, which means all of our students put together, we get a score for those. Students with ability, with disabilities, they're backed out, and we have a, a score for those. And then students, a, a group that we look at is all students except those with disabilities. So we've either got all students with disabilities, or all the students except those with disabilities. So, Anna, if you'll go to the next one. So what you see, um, the, the blue line represents reading, and the orange line represents math, and across the bottom, it's the four, it's the last four years, how we've done. And one of the things that's important to look at is, back in 2009, you know, that was nine and ten, that was before we started really doing the, the tougher, um, um, more rigor- thank you, the more rigorous scoring. So, you know, you're gonna see some ups and downs on them, but if you, if you notice, we're generally moving in the right direction. Now, third grade this year, we had a, 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 a little dip, and that's unusual, cause usually the third grade is, is one of our stronger areas. But one of the things, as we look at all of them, one of the things that the buildings are doing, they're taking a look at the scores, they're taking a look at the item analysis to see specifically, what are those areas that, you know, are causing us some difficulties? And, and everyone is rolling up their sleeves to see what is it that we need to do to continue to go forward. I'm gonna basically just kinda give you a, a quick view of what these are, so that, you know, then you can have an opportunity to go back and take a look, yes.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
When we say all students, and I know that includes the ones with disabilities, is this strictly in our district? Or is this, cause I know that they're including center program students in with our totals now.
These are our matched students, and I, I don't know that. I don't know that our, but the, we, we had to, I don't believe our center ones are included in this. No, they didn't. No.
It's not yet.
Yeah, and, and, well, there were a whole lot of agreements that had to be in place for that to happen, and that didn't.
Okay.
Okay, going forward. You'll notice with the third grade, there are only gonna be two scores, reading and math, because that's, those are the only two tests that the third graders take. Um, if you notice here, um, with the students with disabilities, they went up in math. We, we dipped in, in reading, but, um, you know, those are some of those things that we're, we're continuing to look at. And again, looking at the item analysis, which specifically talks about specifically what was being tested at, what, how did we do on this? How did we do on this? That's where we burrow down in and start to really, you know, this is the overview, but that's where the, the, the buildings are going in to look and see what's, what's taking place. Um, this is all students, except, all students except those with disabilities. But if you keep going, Anna, just kinda, if you notice here for fourth grade, we've added writing. And the format is gonna be the same all the way through, all students, then students with disabilities, and then all students except students with disabilities. The grid at the bottom, or the chart at the bottom, gives you what the actual numbers were, so that you can see that. And the, the line graph shows you whether the trajectory was up or down. Um, going forth, you, in the, in the fifth grade, you see science is added. Um, science went up in some areas and down in others. Social studies in the sixth grade gets added. In the seventh grade, we go back to the reading, writing, and math, so you'll see that. Um, in the eighth grade, in the eighth grade, science is added back in. Now, where we dipped in science in the, um, fifth grade, in the eighth grade, we actually, we outpaced the state for science. And that was in the other document that I'd given you before. Okay, and going on, again, the students with disabilities all accept. And then the final one is, um, social studies in the ninth grade. So this, this gives what our trend has been over the last four years. Um, we have seen some gains. We still have a, a long way to go. You know, we're not out of the woods yet. But if you look at, when we look at the growth model, you know, how we've done, it shows we are moving in the right direction. So if we can continue to do that, you know, our expectation is to be that we will be sitting in a position that we're, we're much more satisfied with, you know, soon.
Thank you. The, and board members, just remember, when you're looking at MEEP scores, you know, we all know this is what's referred to as post-mortem data. It's, it's old data. This, this is a year ago, and it's a snapshot that was taken of performance a year ago. And we've got many initiatives in place, including what's going on with the SIG grant, which I think you can see is, is making an impact. So next year's scores are anticipated to be even better. So keep that in mind when you're reviewing the charts, that they, they are a year post-mortem. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Daniels? Nope? Okay. Next item on the agenda is student reinstatement application. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, before we, uh, do the motion, could I, I mean, I just got back from Florida today. And, uh, usually in our packets, usually we have this whole, um, stuff of what, when I was this kid or this student. Um, could we table this? Because I would like to maybe look at that information.
Do you wanna table it or postpone it?
Or postpone it?
Uh, absolutely. Um, we can postpone this until the, uh, meeting, we have a special meeting on the eighteenth. Will that give you enough time to review the packet? And board members, you know, I was gonna do this later, but I can do it now, since, since the conversation came up, to explain why past practice was changed. Um, there's been considerable discussion at the board table about, um, reinstatement process and documentation that's in the packets. And what the, the, we're trying to err on the side of caution, because we have, we are required to take any and all steps necessary to protect the confidentiality of the student. And if, when the committee, which the board does have, a committee, or I'm sorry, the district has a committee, of which two board members are invited to sit in on, um, for reinstatements, those committee members do not get the packets to take home either, um, for the confidentiality concerns. They come, they look at the packet, they talk about it, they make a recommendation to the board. The intention was to extrapolate that practice on and not have us get the entire packet. Uh, and board members could then come and review the packet here at the administrative office. But any personal identifiable information in that packet should not, uh, be in a situation where it could be distributed. Uh, I did discuss this with MASB. I had sent them an email, and I actually brought a copy of it with me. It's somewhere in this mess, um, where the concern is under FERPA. Um, and that's the federal education, the family. It's, it's family privacy. And it's, that's where we use the, the seven or nine-digit student number to identify the student. And that's why your agenda only has the student number on it. Any discussion about, any public discussion, I'm sorry, about, and that includes, you know, open session, about whether the student is or isn't a special ed student, whether the student does or doesn't take art, anything that could identify that student is inappropriate conversation. And this was, the movement was, the, the decision to not send those packets home was not meant to keep any board members from receiving information prior to you being asked to vote on something. It was to say, we need to respect the confidentiality of the process, and there are plenty of copies that were used for the committee purposes, that, uh, the superintendent's office would have available for somebody to come and review prior to the meeting. It was not, and is not, the intent that those packets would leave this building. But if there's someone that feels they need to take it home and study, you know, I, I'm not gonna dance. I, I'm just explaining to you why that was done, what the motivation was behind it. It was nothing nefarious. There, there was, there was nothing dastardly schemed. It was just, I'm concerned about the confidentiality of the student and protecting the students, and we have to take any steps necessary to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem coming here and spending an hour or so and, and reviewing it, not leaving the building. I was just curious why we didn't have it, uh, because, you know, without knowing even the, the reason why, you know, if this wasn't assault, if this was a drug, if this was just somebody, you know, I don't know the reason. So, to me, I, I guess, um, I have a question, uh, let me see how I can phrase this. Cause to me, I guess, when it comes to me, in, like, in this matter, I, I have a feeling that I have that right to overturn it, because I'm thinking, do I want this child around my child or any other child doing what he did? So I, I have that option of overturning this committee's recommendation or not. If, if they say, I want this kid reinst- this student reinstated, I could say, well, what was the violation? I don't want him around my child. So I guess, um, I always notice we have different people on these committees. Does it have to go through the, the Board of Education or the, um, the, the body here of a reinstatement? Or could we have the same people on a reinstatement committee, like the same seven people, and they're well-trained to, to handle this, and it never has to come to us unless it's an appeal by a parent, and their decision's final? To me, that'd be like a jury thing, I guess, whereas, cause, I mean, without all that documentation, you know, documentation of a police report or this, like I said, I can't make my decision, because it feels like I have that right to overturn this now as a board member.
Well, and you do.
Right.
And that's, to use your example, that committee, the, the reason, the main reason it's different board members is based on who's available.
Right.
And the whole purpose of it coming to the board is, the committee makes a recommendation, but the board is the final hearing panel. I don't know that I would ever recommend that the board totally subjugate its authority to a committee to make a, a final determination without us having, um, you know, a veto power, so to speak. Um, because board members certainly have, um, the, the prerogative to vote in favor or against, uh, uh, recommendations of the committee. But as you said, you need to have time to review the packet.
There's a bias thing too. I mean, I, obviously, a parent coming in front of the board, and you say, oh, God, I went to high school with that guy, and that's his kid, I'm gonna kick out. I can't do that. So, I mean, so where's the fair, I mean, there's a, uh, I think, uh, challenges your, um, ethics, I think, absolutely.
You mean, if you're on the committee?
Yeah.
You know, but I do.
No, in front of the board, even.
Oh, yeah, cause a lot of times, if I, if I know the person that, I, I won't even sit on it if I know them, cause a lot of times I know like ninety-nine percent.
But you know them when they come in front of us on the board begging for their student to come back in, you say, oh, God, that's my neighbor, and that's the kid. How am I gonna live with this neighbor?
That's where we have to be able to put that on the shelf.
Right, but I don't know.
And that's what, you know, and I, I've been in that situation so many times, John, but I just have to look at the information that's put before me and then try to make the best decision that I can. So, you gotta be put in a position.
Can we receive the information with all the identifier?
Yeah, like highlighted on or something?
A redacted report?
Yeah. Without names and, you know, just.
I mean, you would only have to do that to what? One copy and then recopy and all?
I mean, mostly the violation and, you know, maybe past problems.
All names would have to be removed from it.
All names and all references and, and, that's where we start to get into some root book issues. Because one person says, well, I can identify that based on this information, whereas the person that's redacting doesn't realize there's a correlation.
Yeah. But once again, I have no problem just coming in here and leaving the information here if I can review it.
Long as we have.
I just need to make a, I just, I make a fair.
I need my information.
Judgment. Yeah, exactly. Did you have something, you Anna, Dad, cause I know, Mrs. Bowles, you have something, just.
Well, I had mentioned to Dr. Daniels that, um, the board approves expulsions, or the board takes board action on expulsions. So the board has to take board action on reinstatement.
Okay. Yeah, I just, like I said, I didn't make a fair judgment for this student, I just need to look at, and all the students around him that it could affect.
Mr. President, and I'm, I guess I'm hearing a couple of different things, and just so that I can, I'm clear on what it is. Are we talking about the, for confidentiality purposes, the packet isn't coming home? Or are we, I, I guess I'm, I'm starting to get a little confused, cause I'm hearing two different conversations that are, are going on. I was under the impression that the, what we receive as far as it, the student packet portion is going to remain at the board office for board members who, if we have a reinstatement, they can come in at their leisure to review those packets, or a few minutes before, or whenever, to review for the sake of that information still remaining here. Because, you know, and, and just kind of speaking for myself, I've always felt a bit uncomfortable having that type of information in my own household. Not that I don't trust the people that I live with, but you, some people don't have access to shredders or being able to properly, um, dispose of this type of, of personal information. And so I can totally understand where, what it is that you're talking about in the issue. And the fact that we, we give that type of courtesy to our employees, why wouldn't we give it to our students as well? So, um, I, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm not hearing too different, that there's not opposed to us having access to the student packet. It's just more of less, when are we gonna have the opportunity as board members to review that particular information?
Absolutely. And I would say that those packets would be available as soon as they were placed on the agenda. The super, and we were notified that there was an agenda item, the superintendent's office would have copies available for review.
Okay.
Mrs. Bowles?
Yes. Um, personally, I would request specifically to have the information on hand, so that I can research it in depth. Uh, personally, there's times that I may not actually be able to come here to actually be able to sit. So I'm personally, with, I like the idea of having the information. I feel like the citizens have elected us as board members. They trust us, and because they do have the trust, we have a responsibility. And, and that's, that's really pretty much the bottom line. We have a responsibility. If there's any threat in your household, as in someone else having that information, it is still your responsibility as a board member to make sure that you protect that information. That is your job. So personally, to me, I feel I need the information to be able to go in depth and to be able to research it on a deeper level.
I just wanna, and, and that's fine, but I just wanna ask you what you mean by research?
Actually look over the.
Do you wanna read the pocket?
I wanna read it. I wanna look over it. If I need to compare information, I wanna be able to do that. I would like to get the information in an adequate time amount, where I may even be able to contact the interim superintendent and ask them, I need further information. I need you to explain specific things on me. There's times I may come in, she may not be available at that time. So with that, I wanna make sure that I cover all ends. And also as well, Mr. President, if I have any questions, I wanna make sure I have adequate enough time to be able to contact you or any other board member in regards to a specific issue.
Absolutely. I just wanna make sure that you understand that when it comes to expulsions, there's no research. We are required to only look at the record in front of us.
I understand that, but if I need adequate more information.
That's fine, and you're entitled.
I can do that. And I can also compare information if I need to, to just make sure that everything is being judged fairly. Because I don't want anything to come back on this board for any reason. And the only way to do that is to cover all rounds.
I mean, I think that packet's pretty full. I mean, that's why I said there's this pa- the past history of that student and, and any letters. I mean, that's why I said there's this, the past history of that student, and any letters, any police reports.
Which is exactly why it needs to be protected at all costs. You know, I agree, because it's their academic record, it's their tenants' records, sometimes it's social services records that involve the parents and those other children that may not be involved in that instance. So, you know, I would just, you know, I'll make this statement and then we'll move on. If board members can want to come here and review it, they can. If they want a packet sent to them, I'm going to ask that you request the packet in writing.
Right.
And if the information gets out and it's traceable, whoa on that board member.
That's right.
Because, I mean, the way it sits right now, I have no idea what this student did. And then if I vote yes for this, and it was an assault charge with a weapon, silly me.
Exactly.
And it'll be on next Monday's agenda.
Would that fit into our timeframe?
It was postponed.
I'm just asking, I mean, we can anyway, because, I mean, it doesn't fit into our timeframe of, don't we have a?
Do we have a problem with the number of days from the hearing?
That's what I'm asking.
Usually, the next board meeting.
The next board meeting and the next regular?
Next, regular, they say next regular board meeting.
So then, we still have time.
We still have time, though.
Yeah. We still have time to, because our regular meeting would be the 25th, so the 18th is still within that time.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're good.
And I'll come in tomorrow and look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to the fun part of the meeting. Mrs. Papazeklu and the amended 12-13 budget.
All right.
Yeah.
No.
We just have those numbers.
Oh.
I look similar, probably.
You knew how many PowerPoints I've looked at in the last week.
And I don't change my presentation slides, it's just, it works. So, I should get a little funnier. So, we're here to talk about the update. The last time we spoke about budget, technically, at a board meeting, was in November. I believe it was around the 25th or so. And so, I'm here to provide you with updated information between what's happened from then until now and where we go from here through June 2013. So what I provided on this slide, basically, basic information. What was the beginning fund balance, revenues, expenditures, you know, are we in a surplus or deficit for the particular year? The expected ending fund balance, what's the assigned fund balance, and what's the change in the amount? The very first column was that, a November 26 update I provided you. And at that time, we were looking at an $855,000 deficit. Remember, I'm going to take you back to June of 2012, when we adopted our budget, we were hoping to have about $44,000 in fund balance. And when we got all of our student enrollment numbers, you remember those, our numbers were a little bit lower than we ever projected, than we projected, unfortunately, which really threw us into this negative fund balance prediction. And so, what we're looking at today are really the last two columns, the revised budget as it stands today. The first March 11 budget includes the sale of property, we've been talking about that for a very long time. And the last one includes what the budget looks like if we remove the sale of property. And that's going to be a discussion that we need to have tonight. There's also some information on a parcel of that property being sold, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes, too, on a later agenda item. But, you know, I have to bring this to your attention, because the window of time between now and June is not that long to, so the risk that we're taking including this is that, are we really going to, is that going to come to fruition? Are we really going to sell all that property? Now, that property has been on the market since around March 16 of 2012, so we're coming up on a year, very shortly. So, you know, think about this for a minute. Again, we've done a little better if we keep the second column there for numbers, from $855,000 of assigned balance, we're down to $806,000. So, our trend in that area is well. As you know, we can, I budget very conservatively from the beginning of the year, and I'll give you some more information, because I really think that $800,000 number is still a little high, and I'll give you my predictions why. But I hate to put those numbers into stone, because I'm not 100% that those trends will continue to forecast between now and June. So then, the next slide is, again, what has changed. Real basic, you can see there really wasn't much movement. The increase in revenue is about $352,000. We were involved in a class action settlement, which I didn't know about until about six months ago. And then, what was great is they sent a check for $93,000, so I said, well, we'll take that. So that was one piece. And then, we received additional SIG grant money, and then some carryover money from the 11-12 year was finally allocated to us, and we were able to budget that, so about $258,000 of revenue. And then, in terms of expenses, as you know, I say it all the time, what we receive in expenditure or grant revenue, we spend in grant money, so those are always equal. And we had some retirements, you're fully aware of several retirements that we've had in the district, and there are clauses and contracts that the district has held to, and, you know, that's not just one person, that's several people that we've had to come to fruition about making payments out. So again, the increase in the fund balance is about $48,000. Again, still in the hole, about $800 and some thousand. The next slide is virtually the same, the only piece of information that's different is, you can see in the decrease in revenue, if we eliminate that second line, the sale of property, that's the value of five pieces of property that we have on the market. And again, what does that do to the fund balance? Next slide. I usually use this slide because it's for people to see what a drastic change we've had over the course of the last several years. But the yellow line really represents fund balance, and you can see, in '09, '10, we were having a great year, and then, since then, things have gone downhill. You know, the district has done its due diligence in cutting funds. We've, since I've been here, in '05, '06, the district has cut pretty much every single year. And, you know, we've tried to defeat this curve and all the things that are going on in Lansing, but it's to the point now where it's heading, we're heading in a different direction. So that's what it would look like with the sale of property. And the next slide shows you where it's at without. The next slide, are things that I'm going to continue to watch from now until the end of June, will meet, the last regular board meeting in June will be when you'll adopt your final revised 12-13 budget, and you'll actually adopt your 13-14 budget. I'm still waiting for the grand recap from the city of Romulus. It actually gives me the actual tax revenue that they collected. And on that, there will be delinquent property taxes as usual. The county will make 100% collection or make us whole for 100% of the real property, and the city of Romulus is responsible for collecting the personal property tax on delinquent, and we get that over the course of the year when they collect it. If there's any major Michigan tax tribunal cases, that should say MTT, not MMT. And then, we'll get a county tax settlement invoice. And so, that's a big piece of the puzzle, although I don't see any drastic changes there. It's just something I want to make you aware, we do not have the grand recap yet, but it's coming any day. Medicaid, we do have about $150,000 anticipated revenue in Medicaid, and we've seen a small amount of funding, and typically, between now and June, we get a larger piece. So I think I've underfunded that revenue, but again, I don't want to commit to that. And let's talk about some of the trends that would make that $800,000 about $400,000 less. So what I'm saying to you is that I have about $400,000 in expenditures in the budget right now that I think we won't need. And those are in the areas of health insurance. I think about $336,000 I have over-budgeted in the budget. But the trend right now is that we would end the year with those funds available to be put into the fund balance. Unemployment, about $36,000. Workers' comp is trending about $18,000 better than we expected. Substitutes is an area where it's really difficult, because we just don't know, in some cases, who's going to be out, and it's hard to predict. So we always use years past, and that's what we've done here. And then, of course, utilities and repairs and maintenance. We estimate higher than we typically would and hope for the best. Just to refresh your memory on sale of properties, again, we listed those in March of 2012. We have five parcels, two with buildings, three with land only. There's the estimated value, and we'll continue to market to buyers. We have a potential interest right now, one of the pieces of property, and it's going to be an agenda item discussed later in the meeting. So here's where the difficult part comes in. Tonight, you're going to have to adopt a deficit budget, whether it be $850,000 or two, over $2 million. What happens next is I need to contact the Michigan Department of Education and alert them to the status of our potential deficit. I then will need to create a deficit elimination plan. I have 30 days from tomorrow to complete that and submit it for review to the MDE. There's potential interruption of state aid if all the requirements are not met. And the first requirement, again, is to submit it in 30 days. The MDE has a chance to review it. If there's more information that they need, they turn that back around to the district, and I have another two weeks to respond. Typically, if you follow the regulations, your state aid is not interrupted, and that's what we're going to do here in Romulus. The expectation, the law, basically says that the deficit will be eliminated within two years of inception. But you can get a waiver from the state's superintendent of public instruction that you need three more additional years. But that has to be upon their approval. See, the anticipation is that, or the expectation is that you will complete it in two years, but there is a clause that you can get a waiver for three years if it's approved by the superintendent of the state.
Up to three years.
Yes. Again, the MDE approves the plan, and then the district would be responsible for submitting monthly budget control reports, just to keep them up to date. And as well, you would get those as well, because I'm sure you're going to want to know where we stand in a particular month. So I put together a timeline on what's to be expected for the next several weeks. And so, this week, after this is adopted, whichever path you choose, we'll have an administrative review of the 13-14 budget. I have a preliminary one, I'm still working on that, but it should be finalized by tomorrow, end of day. And we will start to, we will begin to create a potential budget reduction list like we have in the past. March 18, we've already determined that we're going to have a special meeting for other purposes, but this would be on it as well. We will review that preliminary 13-14 budget with the Board of Education, and we will provide you with a recommended list of reductions for the Board of Education, the recommended list from the administration team. Have a discussion, I'm sure you may have some thoughts yourself as board members. We are also going to ask our administrative staff to weigh in on some suggestions, as well as potentially some of our unions. During the week of the 25th through the 29th, if we need to, which I probably think we will, we will continue to review that recommended list of recommendations, and then determine when we will, if it's ready to go to the state of Michigan for a, or the Department of Education for a final review. So my hope is to get it in early. I know that sounds crazy, but I'd like to get this moving on in case we come into some issues with it. We have some more time to fix those issues. And it will be submitted by me. Any questions on that?
I have two before we get started. The first one, on that, on your timelines, I know, you know, that we can't, you know, we don't have a crystal ball here. We have a board meeting on the 25th. Are you saying that we may need a special meeting? Because the 29th is Good Friday, so that would have to be the 28th.
Yes.
You may need a special meeting.
I'm thinking we will. I don't see us coming to conclusion on these issues on the 18th and then the 25th. I'm thinking that we're probably going to need another chance to talk. Again, we have to see how those discussions go when we meet on the 18th, but...
I think, board members, it might be wise if we penciled in the 28th.
I would agree.
As a special meeting.
I would agree.
6:00 PM, you know, and get that on our calendars, just to be safe, and if we don't need it, it's easier to cancel. The 28th, it's a Thursday. I recognize that's an off night, and I hope it's not too much of an inconvenience, but we want to make sure that Sheri is able to do that. Before we get into... I'm sorry? I won't be able to make that date? Okay. But I'm sure you'll communicate with Sheri, Paula, or myself, any concerns, questions, and comments that you have.
Six o'clock.
Six, yes. I do have one question, but before I get to that and before we go through board member questions, I want to thank Sheri, Dr. Daniels, and the rest of the administrative team. I know the enormous burden that this is placing on our administrative team, and I ask all of us to keep that in mind, because we're just getting a hold of what this picture looks like and the whole 30-day deficit elimination plan window. There's an enormous workload that's going to happen over the next 30 days. So I'm going to ask you to be patient and to be flexible.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, there is one question that did come up in your spreadsheet that was, you know, that came in our packets. The, there's a pretty remarkable jump between the November and the revised budget in instructional staff.
Yes. That's all related to the grants.
That's what I thought.
Instructional, let me open it up real quick here.
Is that the additional SIG grants that we?
Yes, it is. And the carryover funds. Most of the SIG, a majority of the SIG funds that are being used are being used in a function we call 221, and that's for improvement of instruction, as well as Title II way carryover. If there were any funds in that area, it all goes to 221, so that's why.
Okay. I just didn't want to put any board member...
Nope, I have my notes, because I knew that. I knew that would come up.
It got funneled to me, so, okay. Does anybody have any questions?
So the big question is, for me, you, you know, you have a document in front of you, and you need to decide tonight which lane we're going to pick. Both of them are not good news. One is worse than the other. I guess I have to ask what the board...
All with regard to the property?
Yes. I have to ask what your pleasure is, because I have to alert the state.
I, and board members, you can chime in on this, but the board basically listed those properties for this budget year, they're still on the market till June 30. I think the question becomes, do we continue that into the next budget year?
Right.
Keeping in mind what you said, what is the likelihood of us selling those? When we use this as a budget Band-Aid, especially now that we're in the debt situation, we need to be able to demonstrate that there's a reasonable assurance we're going to sell those. So, but what are board members' thoughts? We'll handle the property thing, that question first.
Can we change Realtors? I mean...
We could change Realtors. You know, if you remember back when, I did put an RFP out for Realtor Services, or appraisal services, I should say, at the time, for, you know, to make it fair and equitable among vendors, and I got no response then. The only reason that we ended up with Signature Associates is because they have experience, they had experience with Wayne Westland, and they're still working with them, and they have, and have experience with River Rouge.
And I would just chime into that, Mrs. Crowe, that, you know, Signature is actually marketing the properties. We had a difference in philosophy with prior administrators that did not. I'm trying to be tactful. That was the breakdown. Since the board reasserted and said, we absolutely want those properties marketed, they have been...
That's what they do.
There's discussions about some of the others, but nothing has formalized into an offer, except for the one that we're going to talk about in a little while, if that helps.
And remember, they have a vested interest in this as well.
Because I'm just wondering if they're marketing, like, to churches and stuff, because today, we're not going to need the two schools, the extra two schools we have, we may be wanting to actually, you know, close another one. So, I'm just wondering if they're really looking where the possibility for people that would be in the market buy versus another school. Obviously, other schools are having the same problems as us because of the academy schools.
We've had other interests in those with properties on them. We've had tours through the buildings, but it did not lead to an offer on the table.
So we're getting the calls.
We are getting calls. So that might make you feel a little better.
It does.
Okay.
I would say, Rob, I think you hit it on the head. I think we have them out, and we should keep them for this budget, because that's what we said we were going to do. And going forward, we need to see if it makes sense. But if we have something on the table now, then it seems like we're actively getting interest in the property, so, I mean, it might be feasible to keep them, so I don't see us taking it off.
It could happen. I mean, it could happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just, can you go a little bit more in detail about the instructional grant and how that carries over?
So, hopefully, I can do this briefly. This basically is the way that the state requires it to be summarized, a budget to be summarized. And it's the way that we are required to report it, financial information database to the State of Michigan, so that all school districts look the same when you're looking at their budget, in terms of the descriptions. Instruction means basic programs are your everyday teachers, your first grade, your kindergarten, all the way through high school. Added needs, sorry about that. Added needs are like your compensatory teachers. If you had special reading teachers and things of that nature that are actually in the classroom with the teachers, that would fit that category. An adult ed is adult ed. Once you get down to pupil services, it's those services that are outside of the classroom, but important to the instructional base. Pupil services, the first one would be counselors, psychologists, things of that nature. They are, you know, that are serving students, but not in the classroom. Instructional staff, you've got library, media techs, curriculum. I kind of listed those there, because that's really an area where people have the most questions. The staff PD is a big one. A lot of our grants, II A is predominantly a two-twenty-one grant, which means it's spent all on improvement of instructions. It's not spent on students. It's spent with, that, those funds are spent on staff to improve the instructional practices that they use every day. And in general, the reason that went up is because SIG, we got two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars additional funds. General administration is what it is. General administration, which is the Board of Education, insurance, things of that nature. School administration are principals, assistant principals, and costs that are related to that. Business is my office, as well as some of our insurance premiums, not health insurance, property insurance. Maintenance and operations, I think, speaks for itself. Pupil transportation speaks for itself. Central office, I've listed those there. That's anything related to curriculum, H.R. and technology. And then, of course, athletics. Community services and parent involvement, and IDC, which is indirect cost. Parent involvement, we are required, in most cases, in most of our grants, especially Title I, to provide an X amount of percentage to parent involvement, to try to get the parents in so that assistance can be had by the students. Indirect cost is another line item in grants where you don't specifically say how you're going to spend it, but they allow you to, let's per se, five percent has to be put away for indirect cost, or can be, I should say. And then capital outlay is capital expenditures that are over five thousand dollars each. So it would have to be a big truck or things of that nature. In this case, it was a bulk purchase of computers that we installed over the summer.
Did that answer your question?
Um, yes, it answered.
I know you're still writing, so...
Purchases of computers, okay.
So that could be buses, if we were buying buses, or trucks.
Okay, well, the purchases of computers, what did you do with, or what did we do?
With the old ones?
With the old ones.
The old ones are, I don't know if they're in this warehouse, or they're at the Mount Pleasant Center, but those are basically allotted, or the board has declared those surplus. And so we are determining how to get rid of those right now.
Do they have software on them already? Have they been cleaned?
Oh, I'm sure that there's software.
Okay. Is there a login that you have to do, structured to log into it?
I'm sure at the time they were being used that there was.
Okay. Has all that been...
Well, that, what usually happens in a computer, in a case like that, the computer's wiped out. So there's really nothing on the computer. I mean, they would even have to install their own operating system, because we had the license for that operating system.
Okay. Okay. But we can still sell those for parts?
Yes. Yes, we can. Very good point. And that's typically what happens.
Okay.
They want the shell of a monitor, or, you know, all the pieces inside of the CPU.
Yeah, and that's what, several months ago, Mr. Thied and I had toured Mount Pleasant, and the administration is researching. There's some...
Different companies.
Jobbers or auction companies that will come out, and they're going to be getting some information, probably in sometime in the spring.
Actually, we just spoke to them last week.
Yeah.
And so we're setting up an appointment for them to come.
We're moving as fast as we can on that before, before we have many more break-ins and stuff to get damaged over there.
Well, it's, it's on the table again, because they contacted us last week, and I told Mr. Morris to move forward with making an appointment for them to go through. Does that help, Tamika? It's both.
Um, yeah, it does. I'm just really trying to figure out, even with the computer, I know, like, is there, are these computer, computers that are just not compatible anymore? Would you happen to know the operating system?
I don't know. On each of them, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. Okay.
Most of those are computers that were used in kayak labs, so they're really...
Because those are still good computers, and I'm thinking, a lot of those computers may still be able to have, you might not be able to necessarily, of course, sell them for a complete amount, but you can, some people can't buy new computers, and that would be a great way to offer that to some of the parents for a nice discount and, and sell it at a cheap, cheap rate. And it's so much cheaper to go buy an operating system and to install that on it than for it is to go and buy a whole computer for the updated year.
We'll make a note of that.
That's why we went over to Mount Pleasant, to see what was capable, or even offer, like, even do a yard, a flea market-type deal for the public to come in. But, like I said, we're still waiting. And a lot of those computers, they scavenge them for parts.
Yes. We do. We do.
Breaking into, I mean, damaging the properties.
Whoa, but they are even cannibalized before they even get to the warehouse for different parts to keep the ones that we have in our buildings applicable.
Keyboards, mice. Right. So I said, as some regards...
It may be missing a SIM card or...
I may hope in the month of April, maybe late April, we'll probably have some better information for you.
Okay.
And that, and that...
Any other questions on the budget for Sherri? If not, the chair will entertain a motion on the amended budget.
Did we decide on which way we're going? That's what you needed, right?
We, I believe we did. I thought I heard you say to include the properties.
Yeah, with the sale of properties.
Okay, that's good.
So, is, just so that I'm clear, I'm sorry, one more thing, one more thing, I'm sorry. In regards to this, this particular property, is this the only, how many, can you tell us how many offers we've had on there? And how, what's the expand of it being on the market?
Now, are we, so right now, we're talking about all of the properties. Are you talking about a very specific one? Are you talking about the property that's on the agenda for later discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we wait, can we, can we wait and discuss that then?
Yeah. There are five properties for sale. I can tell you there's only one formal offer.
Yes.
And that's all there has been, because had there been any others, we would have brought them, you know, to the board immediately, because we want their check.
Okay.
But our understanding is, there's people calling, going through, but they're not making an offer.
Absolutely.
So they're touring the properties, but they're not putting an offer on the table.
Correct. Whether they're delaying their decisions or decided not...
Maybe wants to buy.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay, so again, the, the chair would entertain the motion, and the motion would be on the budget, including the sale of property as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education adopt the amended two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen general fund budget with the sale of property. Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Funderburke, supported by Ms. Buckley. Sherri, I think if it's okay with the maker and the seconder of the motion, to include in the motion that it projects a negative fund balance of eight hundred six thousand seven and four dollars.
That's very wise.
Because we need to, we need to acknowledge that, okay, we're, we're in the deficit situation. If that's okay with the maker?
No, that's fine. Do you want me to say that?
Well, no, I just kind of said it, so Anna will type it. Eight hundred six thousand seven hundred four dollar deficit. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unfortunately, we have a deficit budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready?
It is. Welcome to us and sixty other, sixty percent of this.
Yeah, you know, that's a good point. If you go out, if you go out on the MDE's website, there is a section about deficits, and you would be able to actually see the paperwork that I'm going to have to complete to go to the state. I can't give you the exact address, but it's not hard to find, Ms. Bowles. But you can also get a lot of information about who's already in our position and the progress other districts have made or not made. So, you know, if you have a couple free minutes, you can go out to the state's website again. It's on the deficit elimination plan. It's easy to find. If you just Google deficit elimination plan for MDE, you'll find it.
Okay. We break down this budget.
Sherri, I'm confident you will guide us through this.
Thank you.
I'm confident that you will.
Okay, with that, we'll move into the redesign committee report.
Give Sherri a little break here.
Sorry, board members, do you need a, do we need a break? Okay. Just figured I'd mention, I have a bladder the size of Texas.
Good?
Yes.
So, we're going to do a district redesign administration recommendations presentation for you tonight. This is the culminating event for us, as far as the redesign committee that the board asked us to form. So if you'll just bear with me for a moment, I know everybody up at the table knows this, but obviously, this is for our viewing audience as well. I want to just do a little bit of, of background on the, the formation of the district redesign. Because we had declining enrollment, the economic times are as what they are, this Board of Education asks, asked the administration of this district to form a redesign committee that is made up of school, community, and community stakeholders, so that they could give us input as to what they would like to see our district become. So, so that was the charge that was given to us. You asked us to focus on two things, on how to meet the needs of our smaller school-age population, and how to add value and increase opportunities for children. So those were the two, two big tasks that we had. The committee was formed, there were twenty-eight members of this committee. The members included board members, school administration, as well as board office administration. Sherri and I were the co-facilitators of the redesign committee. We had teachers, we had parents, we had city government members participating on this committee actively, and we also had union leadership. We had an excellent cross-section. All schools were represented. We had, we met five times as a whole committee, so I'll get to that in a minute. We, we created some subcommittees that met several times in between our whole committee times, but as a whole, we met five times. The subcommittees that were formed the very first day of the redesign committee, we did an activity where we said, okay, we gotta, we have to eat this elephant. And we all know to eat an elephant, you take one bite at a time. So we, we did a little activity that kind of broke it up into natural areas. And the three subcommittees that were formed as a result of that activity were subcommittees that would focus on, one, learning configurations and facilities, two, value add, and three, public relations. Each committee, subcommittee discussed, and I can say I was part of at least two of the heated debate meetings, several ideas. There were so many ideas that were flowing through. Great ideas, some were high in the sky, but we still put them out there to see if we could flush anything out that we could reasonably come to you today on. The process that we used, the subcommittees discussed and debated ideas that were relative to that subcommittee's area of view. We had some overlap, you know, we dealt with that, but that was, that was the, the process that we used in the subcommittees. Those ideas that the subcommittees came forward with, they got consensus as to what they wanted to present to the whole committee, that, which, so they would come forward to the whole committee for consideration, and we would get some direction at that point at each subcommittee level, and then go back into our sessions, our, our additional meetings. The whole committee then made a recommendation to the Romulus Central Office Administration, who then took those recommendations under advisement for today's recommendation to the Board of Education. So I don't want, I don't want to dismiss that there was, you're going to get three slides, basically, of recommendations, but I can tell you that if I put everything out there, you would have hundreds and hundreds of slides and ideas to, to funnel through. So, the recommendations, right now, from administration to the Board of Education regarding redesign for thirteen-fourteen school year, the first, subcommittee or first group is the learning configurations and facilities recommendation. This administration is recommending that we maintain four elementary schools for the two thousand thirteen-fourteen school year. The budget implication on that, and we tried to put a budget implication for everything, because everything goes back to the budget, it's our opinion that the district will save nine hundred thousand dollars in general fund savings if we continue on with four elementary schools this year. Then you could, we can take it all the way to a cost-neutral impact. And we can go into further discussion about that if you'd like to at this point, or we can hold off until the end. Mr. McLaughlin shaking his head yes. Okay. So this is where I hand it back to Sherri.
Just because, you know, I, I see, I see that that'll become a question if we don't answer it now.
So, the reason that you see nine hundred thousand dollars is, it has everything to do with thirty-one A. And it has to do with the fact that we have certain classrooms that we've designated as class size reduction, which is the, basically, the only way that we're using, or the only allotment we're using for that thirty-one A right now. If we were to reduce our buildings to, let's say, three elementary schools, we could house all of our students. What we couldn't do is house all of our students and keep our thirty-one A classrooms. Does that make sense? And that we would need split classrooms? Yes. Yes.
Yeah, we would have to go back to a split classroom environment.
So that's where that comes from.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay, the second recommendation from the learning configurations and facilities group is to move community high school to Romulus High School as a school within a school. Now, we haven't flushed out all of the details of what that would look like. Obviously, this is a concept that we're bringing to you. The budget, the budget implication on that is about a four hundred thousand dollar savings. That includes closing the building and reducing the staffing. If we go to an evening program only, because that was also discussion at the, in this subcommittee, we're going to see a less, less of a savings. That's just an economic reality that the board needs to consider as well. The third recommendation is that adult education program is maintained as an off-site day program and evening program in, in the school buildings. We're already working on that, looking to secure sites, trying to leverage some of the partnerships we're now building with the Romulus City. We're investigating other venues to have our daytime programming for our GED and adult ed learners. This would be at no cost to the district. That's a one hundred percent self-sustaining program. It does not come out of general fund at all, and it would continue not to.
Becca?
Mm-hmm.
Going back to moving the community high over to the high school.
Yep.
Is that building on the market?
Not yet.
It is not.
Would that, put that building on the market if we so choose?
It would be on the market if that's, yeah, that's the board's pleasure.
If the board decided. Correct. Correct.
I mean, I would think there would be a lot of, just, a lot of things we'd have to look at to be able to do that.
To move community to the high school? We, we already started doing some preliminary work, just, just because we knew that you would ask questions, and first, we wanted to know if this was even a feasible thing that we could do. Is there room? Is there a way that we can create a school within a school where we've got an alternative setting that's not part of the general, general education environment? We have been able to determine that there is a wing of the high school that has its own entrance/exit. If we had a different start time and end time, obviously, that would be part of the, the programming for this. We have a way to move our technologies over there to support the, the online learning initiatives. We've kind of investigated that, so the feasibility of it is there. There is room at the high school for it. There's a place for it to keep them with themselves as a learning community.
Okay, because I, the whole purpose of the community high is to get, separate them from that high school environment. Correct?
That's correct.
So now we're putting them back, we created something to get them away from the high school environment.
That's correct.
And now we're putting them back into the high school environment.
I think one of the things I, I would hope that the board would consider is that location isn't, doesn't, doesn't define a program. It's a nice add-on, but you still run a program based on the parameters and the expectations of that program. We can still run a program, understanding that our population for that group of students has dwindled down to, we're anticipating 80 for next year. That's a very manageable-sized student population. Now, not to say that 80 can't grow again, and we see it from our perspective, all of the stuff that's going around that's taking away students from that school program, those are, we're just kind of waiting for them to fail, and it's sad, because I feel helpless, I can't do anything about it. But these online programs that are running for alternative ed kids, these models, they don't work for this particular learner. And the state will eventually come in and say, well, guess what? You don't have any completers, we're not going to fund you anymore, so they are going to close. So I guess we're trying to just position ourselves so that we can keep our program moving along, yet prepare for that influx of students. Once we get to a certain-sized student, then obviously, we would have to look at alternative settings as well, because then you can't manage 150. You can't, if a quarter of your students are alternative students, then you can't do that within the confines of the traditional school.
Because if it starts to grow, then we have to look at, do it all over again. Because, I guess, because they would have to be, I won't say self-contained, that's just, to me, that's too strict. But what I mean is, because you have lunches, I mean, everything that's...
Everything is separate. We've kind of already plotted out with our, and that change, that different late-start and late-release time is critical here. You know, so we're going to be able to share those, the lunchroom services, yet those students won't be at lunch together. We'll be able to share the health class. We don't need a...
So they won't be mingling.
No. And we can program that in.
I guess, but, yeah, but they would almost have to mingle at some point. But, I mean, they're in the same building. I can't see them not mingling, but, I mean, not at lunch, maybe not at lunch and those kind of things, but hallways. I mean, after, you know, coming out of the building. I mean, it's just some, just...
No, it needs to be, you're right, it has to be considered. You're speaking for your constituents as well, because those are the concerns that I'm sure members of the community would have.
And that's one of the concerns that we're going to have to discuss, and, you know, one of my questions is going to be on timelines, when do you need to be the trigger point for some of these changes? This being obviously the most visible change at this point in the game. You know, and I just remember how bat-crazy this community got when we combined middle school and high school bus runs. And I can hear it now, putting those kids in the high school during the same times. I understand a different start and stop times, and I understand the savings may not be the same, but if we went to an evening program, and this was kind of discussed at the committee, we don't have to feed them.
That's correct.
And...
There's no, it's not a lunch, we don't have a dinner program.
Yeah, and if we put them, you know, if we run this program truly separate, what is your concept? Taking the food up to their wing, or are we going to have our cafeteria staff working additional time?
Right.
And that becomes a bargain and a work-rules issue.
No, it's just adding to their workday. So we would have that lunch back up to, or that preparation time for that lunch back up to the last high school lunch, because they start so much later. So logistically, we could do that, whether we brought the food to them, or, you know, we allowed movement through the building, supervised movement, I guess is the point that I'm making. You know, we'd have to decide that, what would be in the best interest of the school.
Okay, but what about their sports?
Their sports, they're only eligible to play the sports in their league, which is the alternative.
Right, so I'm saying, how would they facilitate their games? Where would they play that, then, if we take them, because they play basketball at Mount Pleasant, and they flag football, and so how does that athletics take over?
They would probably just have to reserve another elementary school.
Okay, so we play at another elementary school?
Yeah.
And it does not affect our early college? We still have the room?
That's correct.
The question that I would have on the sports program is if we're going down to 80 FTEs, is it going to be financially feasible for us to maintain a separate sports program? Or is that going to be an additional drain?
That sports program is so small, so minimally funded, they don't have the same funding that, their coaches don't have $4,000 stipends with assistant coaches. They have...
Well, yeah. You might get new students with, being on Wayne Road, you still have a bus route pusher off 94 now, so that could appeal to some...
I mean, I think, I think the board's biggest consideration, as Mrs. Buckley had pointed out, is going to be the perception in the community and what that is going to imply.
What is your timeline for anything to do with Community High School?
Well, I mean, there are staffing that, obviously, we're going to be issuing layoff notices, April 1st.
In terms of finance, 30 days?
Oh, duh!
It's true, yeah. I mean, this is going to be part of our budget.
Good call.
There's going to be a lot of decisions, and as you mentioned already, it's going to be very busy month.
Well, and, you know, I did not prepare the board, you know, for action tonight, just so that we could hear what's going on. But certainly, we're going to have to consider, you know, I don't know that the 18th is going to be soon enough, or going to be long enough to allow board members to mull this over, so I think if we place it on the agenda for March 25th, that's our regular meeting. Does that give you time to put things in place with layoffs?
That does.
Or April 1st is your drop-dead day, right?
So our time...
Ish. Ish.
I guess, excuse me, Mr. President. So our timeline, this is something that we want to do for the next school year.
It's our recommendation for the 1314 school year.
I have a question about just the building in general. I know we put a lot of money into that building with the security and a lot of the computer centers, and I know, I just heard you say that the computer equipment is taken care of. What about, like, all of the security? Yeah. Well, is that something that we will be extracting from those buildings?
Absolutely, and placing them in buildings.
Okay.
Predominantly in middle school and high school, I think.
That's correct.
And I guess, it's, I guess I would need to know, would like to know what the cost of having it removed from there and placed into a new building, how is that going to impact us? Because I know we'll have to pay again.
Right.
Is that figured into the savings that you guys already figured?
It is.
The moving costs?
The construction part, definitely.
Right, right.
When I say instructions, don't get me wrong, we're not adding rooms. And I think we're adding more rooms, and not really much in terms of the classrooms that we have to do except for the computers.
Just the two computer labs, and that, we actually went over with our consultant on that one, and the cost of running the lines for this, because of the location that was selected for this program, it's the shortest amount of fiber that we would actually have to run. So it's actually the most minimal cost for moving those technology labs.
And those costs have been factored in, so this is an additional...
That's correct.
...savings beyond that.
I just got a couple of other questions. What would be, so if our high school started to grow, or the program started to grow? And we had to say, after, you know, we got our early college coming on, and, you know, we've got all these good things happening, so what building, at that point, would we put things back into? And I know, I know that's just all hypothetical, but, I mean, what's the cost of having to do that? Because I do see our high school growing, because especially with this...
Especially with the early college.
Early college, I mean, that's all I hear people talking about.
Well, a lot's going to depend on enrollment. You know, as you know, the recommendation that we have is to keep four elementary schools for the 1314 school year. If our enrollment continues to trend down, I don't think this board is going to have any choice but to close an elementary school down the road. You know, and again, that's all dependent on the 1314 enrollment numbers. So in my, you know, I call it Rebecca's world, as I'm fashioning these things, you know, we've got a little lifeline out there, if the growth occurs right away.
Well, I see what you're saying. We might have an elementary school to move them to, okay. I got that. I got one other question.
How many more high school students would you need? Is that what you're saying? Like, an influx of high school students? Do you need that space for the...
Well, remember that that high school, I mean, did it house 2,000 students?
Yeah. There's a lot of room at high schools.
Yeah, I know.
What amount of students we house in some of our buildings? There's some space.
There's a lot of nooks and crannies that we're kind of, we've expanded to.
I mean, there's some large rooms there, as a matter of fact, that we used for more industrial-type programs back in the day, the city night owl. I mean, worst-case scenario, if our student enrollment goes up that high...
Build walls.
We'll build walls. There's some space to that side of the building.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. I just wanted to know that we had space.
And another option is we could convert, if we end up with a huge enrollment, we could end up with converting it to a night program at that point, if we needed to, you know, multi-purpose the space.
One more.
One more.
So it makes sense that if we even, we don't, we're not able to sell that property, it still makes sense for, if it just sat there, it'd still be more of a savings for us not to have them in that building, just for that building to sit there and...
On average, building of that size, you're talking just an operational cost of about $179,000. When I say operational, I'm talking about cleaning of the building and utilities. That's it. And remember, we're having, well, 116 right now?
So we have a whole building open for a small amount of students, is what you're saying?
Now, we are running adult, we are running, we have the luxury of running daytime adult ed programming out of there, and I don't want to negate the value of that, because we do have some great GED and high school completion programming going on, but we also have in-the-works plans to relocate that, so that we can continue with those services as well.
Okay, and where would we put that?
In the evening, it'll be in the schools, because we have space available.
Just different schools?
Actually, the library, we have a partnership with, which we're redeveloping that partnership. We also have some conversations going on. I know the adult ed manager is talking with the council, the city chamber of commerce has a building that's kind of just hanging out there. It's not really used during the day. We're having conversations with the RAC, those types of locations.
Because the RAC's got those, that were supposed to be tutoring rooms, that basically are birthday party rooms.
Right. We would not have adult ed programming at the high school during the day. We don't mix those age groups.
So you guys have done your homework, I see.
We have.
Okay.
The majority of the students now, over 80% of the students that are enrolled at Community High School are Romulus resident students. These are our kids. We started with many of them in the kindergarten, preschool, GSRP program, so...
Sandy, you have a question?
I would just say, I would like to see it go the late-start, late-release, that I'm not, I think that going to an evening program, you'd lose a lot of kids, and I just, I just really feel bad, no child left behind.
I'm not going to argue with you, Mrs. Kraut, because I do also feel that if we went to an evening program, that the 80 that we're anticipating for the late start, early, late release would turn down, we would probably go down to 40. And at that point...
What's the point?
We can't sustain that.
We can't sustain that, because we still have to administer.
What do you think the late start will have, impact will have? What time do we start now?
They would start probably at 10:00. So, you know, we would fashion it so that their start time doesn't interfere, or have, it's completely off-bell schedule for them. So we have an entrance point for them, they have one entrance. It goes directly into the area that those students would be housed in, that school within a school right there. They're in a hallway of the building that, you know, there's, while they could walk through, we're anticipating putting up a temporary barrier, kind of, just a visual for student, all students, hey, this isn't a walkthrough anymore. This is a, this is a school within a school, you have to have correct ID to get into this area.
Any other questions? We haven't gone through the whole slides, but just on the Community High School. Because I think we've given them enough questions for them to come back with detail, and then we can be prepared to debate it on the 25th and give them direction on the 25th. Nope?
And if you have any questions, of course, you can call me, I can, you know, offline.
Continue on with your presentation.
Okay, so the second subcommittee was the value-add, so here is the value-add recommendation, early college, which...
We already did.
The cart was way behind the horse on this one. So that was one. And the second one, and Dr. Daniels is going to help me with this one, develop a continuum of leadership and academic opportunities K-12. So what that means is creating a vertical alignment of activities and initiatives district-wide, that creates a cohesion of, I'm a Romulus Community Schools student. One of the examples that we kind of got in the committee as a whole for this, I'll just use our colors, you know, we're burgundy and white. Maroon and white. Is there a difference between burgundy? Is there a difference, really? See? We want our kindergarteners getting all mad at me, too. We want to create that environment, starting in the al mentaries, that I am an eagle, you know, see me soar kind of thing. We want to create that kind of continuum, but also extend that continuum throughout our curriculum, throughout our, just the whole experience of being that, you know, proud eagle.
Romulus is the town of the eagles, not of the aardvarks and six other...
Right, I mean, we can certainly still have our differentiation at the levels, you know, I mean, here are lions, but really, I mean, Romulus Community Schools, we're eagles. I mean, and that's just an example. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Dr. Daniels?
That's one of the big ones, because it helps build community. And I know one of the persons on the team, the community she lives in, they have that, you come to elementary school where eagles learn to fly, and then you go right on up where you take off and soar. But then also, even some of the other types of activities that we've started doing, we've got leadership teams at our elementary schools, and our middle school, and the high school, and starting to do things across, you know, the district, and to build that we are all one, we're little pods, but we're all one, and we're one in a lot of ways. You know, not only that we're eagles, but we're leaders. You know, we've got elementary leaders, and we've got all the, recognizing the coordination of curriculum-type activities, making sure that it's, as much as we try to do it, even in a more assertive way, and where we really make it known to our constituents, to the community, the coordination of the kinds of activities that we're providing for the students, those are some of those kinds of things that we were looking at.
Even like the early college, and we've already started adopting this, you know, does this impact? This isn't a high school thing, this is a Romulus Community Schools thing.
That's right. You know, and you can go into any of the elementary schools, and you see evidence that we're trying to get our kids college-bound everywhere. But making that something that everybody knows, how do we, and, you know, it might be part of the marketing that we're talking about, but having it so that everyone talks college in some way, you know, and everyone, and it's just a part of our culture, a part of our being, and those are some of those things that we're talking about.
Why couldn't we rename those middle school teams like Junior Eagles?
Right.
It would really be...
That'd be a nice little touch, and keep them maroon and white, instead of the Bulldogs, or it's the Romulus, you know, Junior Eagles. Of course, when we do that, then we're going to be suckered into buying new uniforms. It is what it is. There's going to be an expense.
I see fundraising.
A lot of M&amp;M's.
But look at that, once you get that burgundy t-shirt, it can last.
That's right.
Don't know where you'd wear a burgundy shirt, just saying.
That maroon and white.
I got all these cheers in my head, maroon and white.
I'm going to get my color wheel out after this meeting to find out, what did I just say? Okay, last recommendation to the subcommittee is the public relations recommendation, and this should come as no surprise to you, that public relations committee recommendation is to hire a marketing public relations staff and create a marketing budget to do so many of the things that Velaces here was talking about. You know, we need to brand ourselves, we need to have a cohesive plan of how we communicate about what we do, who we are, to, I mean, we are, as, it was Tiffany, right? As Tiffany said, you know, we're, I mean, we got people out on the East Coast going, well, that's kind of a cool place. I mean, we are the best-kept secret in the Downriver area, and that's what this position and this budget would allow for. I put $150,000 out there, but I don't know what it's actually going to be. We have to, you know, I'm kind of looking at your faces to see how much further I'm going to go as far as bidding out, and...
Like I said earlier, baby steps, you know.
But we know we need to, we know that we need to put money into this...
We absolutely do.
...to receive the net effect, and we're not 100% sure. This committee was not sure how to do that without, we're not brand experts, we're not marketing gurus. That's not our mission. We're not very good about talking great things about ourselves either. That's counter, that's counter to our personalities as educators, you know, we're quiet heroes.
We're service-centered heroes.
So those are our recommendations, and I'm sure that they'll have lots more discussion, we'll have lots more discussion of these as we go forward with our 1314 budget. Any questions?
The one thing that I wanted to do, and again, thank you, you and Sherry did a wonderful job facilitating those redesign committee meetings, and board members, both Sherry and Rebecca alluded to this in both of their presentations. Now is the time for us to sharpen our pencils, and if you want to make, I don't want to say hit lists, if you want to make wish lists or worst-case-scenario lists on your own, by all means, now is the time to start doing that. If you've got suggestions and ways that you think we should be looking from a budget standpoint, now's the time, because we're going to have an accelerated conversation over the next 30 days, and then we're going to have to revisit that decision, basically on a monthly basis, to make sure we're in line with the targets that are set in place. So this is going to be a very fluid deficit-elimination plan, in that we're going to have to make sure we're tweaking and adjusting and doing that. So please, if you have ideas, concerns, please communicate them either through myself or to Dr. Daniels. If you send them to me, they'll be forwarded on as from a board member, not from that board member. So if you want anonymity, we can funnel it that way, so that nobody feels to be on a hunt, or whatever. That's completely fine. We need to have candid conversations. Now's the time to do that. Now's the time to do that. Anybody have any questions tonight that they're ready to hit with? If not, we'll move forward. Okay, thank you. Next item is the sale of property update and action. Board members, you did have passed out at your places when you got here today, the actual purchase agreement. Yes, it's very wordy, it's all the legalese. You also received a topic sheet that was presented. I will let Dr. Daniels discuss with you the chain of events that led to this formal offer being presented. Dr. Daniels?
And, and Sheri, help me, when, in February, we were approached to say that we had someone who was interested in making us an offer. We were listed at, and I don't have that right in front of me, what was it, two?
I got it.
Okay.
Change roles.
The property was listed at $251,400.
And the, the first offer that we received was 100
150,000.
150,000. And we countered with 200,000, and they
I can take it from here.
Okay, thanks.
So the counter was 200,000, and our real estate agent basically went to them with that counter offer, and we were told that for that, for this particular organization or company, if anything was over 195,000, basically, they had to go for board approval. And they weren't sure they were going to get it. So the best that they could do was come back with an offer of about 180,000.
So that's what we have before us, is an offer, and again, this is for a vacant lot.
Yes, it is.
There's no building on this, it's just about eight acres.
It's, yep, a little over.
A little over eight acres of property. And the, the final tendered offer from Crown Enterprises is $180,000. So before we start discussing this, you know, there should be a motion on the floor. So at this point, I would entertain a motion.
Did that topic sheet?
Yes.
There is a topic sheet. Okay.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education concur with the recommendation of the adminis, administration and approve the sale of the vacant lot to Crown Enterprises, Inc., as outlined in the purchase agreement, for $180,000.
Support. I'm sorry, that's moved by Mrs. Funderberg, supported by Mr. Thede?
Okay.
Okay. Questions or comments? Miss, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mrs. Kraut, and then you, John.
What do we spend every summer mowing the grass to keep it within code?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I'm not even sure if we go to that property.
This is property that's located on Beverly Road.
It's on Smith Road.
On Smith Road, I'm sorry.
This is the ordinary
It must have been.
Yeah, that's right.
I missed if they demolished the building, I'm not sure.
That's why I was, that's by the recycling.
Yeah.
So that's, is Crown Enterprises the recycling company?
They are a transportation company.
Oh, okay.
And this piece of property is adjacent to their property, so
Right, it's Smith and Middleville.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Yeah, there's not much
That probably helps.
There's not much. So it's not mowing whatever, it's mostly trees.
And it's the professional judgment of our real estate broker that this is probably the best we're going to do on a vacant property.
Now, I can tell you, this is the only, you know, this is the only offer. We haven't had anyone else, anyone else look at the property.
Especially where it said, I would imagine
Yeah, there's not a lot of
It would have to be something commercial or
Well, on the other side of it.
I don't
Because those would be the only two people really interested.
I don't know the answer to that.
There's nothing on the other side of it. It's off, it's off, it's off Smith Road, it's an old subdivision that the airport bought out, and then you have one
It's a recycling
Used to be part of, well, recycling's way down. This is old, part of Old Central Transport, which
Okay, yep.
There's a, there's a building there with semis, so it's basically, I think they're moving their facility a little bit.
They're expanding their
Yeah, because they're the truck, they need to park trucks and everything, so. There's no other businesses on Smith Road, other than the recycling way down at Merriman.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One down?
One down, four to go.
Is that factored into our budget?
Well, all of them are factored into our budget, but, you know, this helps us a little I mean, for this amount. Yes. This is 180,000 dollars that is ours, you know, we don't have to project.
Well, actually, the budget was, was factored in at the listing price.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're right. You're right.
It was budgeted at 251, but at least we have 180 that we're going to put in the bank.
Right.
Hopefully before the bond refunding happens, so.
Yeah.
With that, item 12, there is no item under other. The next item is communications and expressions from the public. I have no forms, did anybody, nobody has anything to bring up? I'm sorry?
I wonder why I don't have a score.
Thanks, Jonathan.
We'll move into item 14 while we're waiting for the score. Any questions? I'm sorry?
25, 20, Ramonos, and then the other school is going on.
Well, obviously
They must have just started.
We don't have 100 points yet, so it's still going on. Questions and concerns of board members? We'll start at the end. Ms. Bowles, do you have anything this evening?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kraut?
No.
Ms. Funderberg?
No, not at this time.
You're not going to talk about the owl vomit?
Oh. Okay, so we went to Mr. McLaughlin and I, and Dr. Daniels had an opportunity to visit the hands-on science fair over at Romulus Elementary on Friday.
Eck.
And we had the lovely opportunity of having a wonderful lunch. They fed us pizza and salad, and then they took us back into the back for the big, huge surprise, which was dissecting owl pellets. So I had Jacob Hensley, who was the most adorable fourth grader, explain to me the digestive system of an owl. And really, they have two stomachs. One is the digestive tract, and the other is a reservoir where the remains that are not digestible, which is divided by the gizzard. I never knew what a gizzard was for. Now I know. It filters the bones
And the fur.
And the fur from the, the edible part of, of the prey that they eat. And they regurgitate it back up into like this hard knot of
It's like a dookie.
Fur, and it just, it looks crazy.
It's like a cat.
And so
It's like a cat.
I let Jacob do all of the dissecting as I watched with him, but it, and actually, once they got down to the bones, it, it didn't gross me out as bad. But I even took a picture of, of them being able to, after they dissected it, they began to assemble the bones on a skeletal, a skeletal map of, it was a vole, which is a type of rodent that they eat. And so definitely an experience that, again, I watched. But it was really, really nice to really get to see the kids engaged in this particular activity. But I think the one thing that really, really stood out to me the most, that I kind of walked away with, was near the end, they started kind of visiting each other's sites. And as they got an opportunity to start, you know, really kind of pulling apart and putting together the skeletons, what they began doing was they, they started kind of camarading together, and so, oh, well, you don't have a skull, I've got five over here, so let me go get you one of mine. So that, I'm more than sure that once they completed this project, every student had at least one particular bone, vertebrae, skull, rib, to be able to kind of identify on their, their skeletal map, so that they could turn it in as a final project. And that, that's what I walked away with, was the fact that they came together as a classroom and as a team, and actually really worked diligently on those projects. So, yeah, it was really cool.
And was Mrs. Jordan the teacher?
Yes, Mrs. Jordan.
She did an exceptional job.
An awesome job. And I, I guess also, too, just the fact that they were able to, one of the things that, that we hear often at this table is that if a student can teach it back to you, then they've grasped, they, they comprehend it, they understand it, they know it, and so they're able to teach it back to you. And Jacob did an excellent job.
Yes. Thank you.
Are you done?
Yes.
I got the picture, I'll show you before I went in.
Thank you for helping me with my diet, because I'm no longer hungry. Oh, my God. Okay, I have a couple of things. I just want to say congratulations to the Romulus Boys Basketball Team, they won districts on Friday. Go Eagles! They're playing right now, so I am not very happy that I don't have a score yet, but I'm going to find out why in just a little bit. So Jonathan did check, so it was 25, 20, they started at 7:00, so I'm thinking it's got to be more than that now.
Is that the red and white team?
No, it's the maroon and white. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, we have kindergarten roundup coming April 24th from 1:00 to 8:00 at Corey. So that's for the listening audience, and if you know anybody that we have some, you need to round up our kindergarteners. And I think that is all I have.
Mr. Thede?
After Danielle's story, if Steve could just put a PG 13 rating in tonight's meeting, it's a normal G rating. The kids would like it.
He was slow. Ooh, very descriptive.
Mrs. Beard?
No, I have nothing since then.
Almost said Mrs. Bird. Because of the owl, because of the owl story, yeah. I had a couple of things, obviously, you know, the, the owl thing, and, you know, I learned something new, I didn't realize owls don't hoot.
That's right.
They screech. And I was shown the, the, I'm going to call it the wrong thing, but the vocabulary board, where they make the, the assumptions, and they, they, they prove themselves wrong by doing the research and the data. And it was absolutely wonderful, as, as Ms. Funderberg was saying, about the collaboration between the students, there was 100% team aspect. And, you know, I got to give props out to Mrs. Jordan, and I, and I'll do this again in, in a note as well, but the classroom management that I saw, I mean, it, it was just phenomenal. There was 35 kids in that room, plus parents.
About seven, eight parents.
And you would, you would think that kids would be bouncing off the walls, and it, it was really a very academic experience, and it, it was disgusting. You know, I wimped out. Board members, two things. The legislative luncheon that's being hosted at the high school next thir, I'm sorry, next Friday, the 22nd. If you haven't, let me know if you're coming or not, please do so, like tomorrow. Chef Banks needs to know how many to prepare for, so I'd like to be able to give him that information. Also, the calendars that were passed out at your seats tonight, they show board members' visit to Wick Elementary on the 22nd, that's being rescheduled, we didn't realize that there was a conflict there with the legislative lunch, so we will watch your calendars for an update from, from Mrs. Bosidis, when she's able to, to get that rescheduled for us. With that, there is need, oh, yes, thank you, thank you. My, my right arm here is reminding me
Your two right arms.
My two right arms.
Your three right arms.
Remember, early college meeting Wednesday at 6:00 PM? Please Facebook it, please Twitter it, do whatever to get this out. Principals, I appreciate it if you did what you can do to remind people. Again, it's Wednesday, 6:00 PM, at the high school auditorium. It is mandatory for students and parents that wish to participate in the early college program this coming fall. So, and if anybody sees this tape, call Lisa Mockridge at 734-532-1022 to make arrangements to get your child enrolled in this program. With that, there is a need for an executive session for personnel and contract negotiations. So at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Education go into an executive session for personnel contract negotiations update.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Funderberg, supported by Ms. Kraut. Is that the voice I heard down that end?
There were two of us.
Actually
There was, like, several. All those in favor, please sign, oh, I'm sorry, we need to do roll call vote, thank you. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Funderberg?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Thede, yes. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, of course, we are going to go into executive session. There is no action to be taken after this meeting, so you can have a great evening, and we'll see you next time. The chair will entertain a motion to go back into open session.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Funderberg.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Kraut. Have a roll call vote, please. Mrs. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraut?
Yes.
Mrs. Funderberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Thede, yes. Is that it? This meeting is
Motion to adjourn? Support.
Thank you. Been moved by Mrs. Kraut, supported by Ms. Funderberg, to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm up already.
Meeting is adjourned at 10:10 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.